Good evening, Ms. Mugler, Mr. Kilgore, members of the Board, and our Hampton City Schools family. Tonight I stand before you to outline the Superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal year 2013 through 2014. This budget is set up to serve the 20,150 students that we're projecting for school year 2013-14. We remain committed to protecting our core business of teaching and learning by aligning our resources to help our division achieve its goals. Remember last year when I stood before you? We had a budget challenge, a shortfall of about $2.32 million. You know, it's hard to get up here again and say that we're facing another challenge this year. So the first thing that I want to talk to you about is the economic environment that we're facing. And so much of this is because of the real estate revenues that are down in our city. Down $14 million since 2010, and that's equivalent to about 14 cents on our tax rate. Coupled with that, we've had significant changes in state and federal government revenue. The city has had its challenges, and you see what's up there about the city, but I really want to focus on what's happened to the schools over the last few years. Currently, the state provides about 64% of our budget; the locality, 34%, and then federal miscellaneous revenue, a little under 3%. Over the last four years, the state contribution to Hampton City Schools has decreased over $21 million. That is a significant amount of money. Added to that is the decrease in local contribution of $3 million. So we're talking about $24 million, fully 12% of our operating budget that's been eliminated over the last four years. And I think something that's important for all of us to understand is that Virginia ranks 38th in the nation for K-12 spending, and it ranks 31st in teacher salaries. In spite of our fiscal pressures, I want to tell you that I am so proud to be a member of the Hampton City Schools family and to be the person that's leading our teachers, our staff, to assist our over 20,600 students from 57 different countries. Tonight you saw the teacher from Langley receive a Creative Instruction Award. And I have to tell you, I've been in her classroom, and she's amazing. And Langley Elementary School is a school that really is like our little United Nations. It's an amazing place. And I really wish that I could take every community member on a tour of our schools, so they could see the excellent things that are occurring. As you see up here, we have 1,500 teachers, but we have more national board-certified teachers than anyone in the area. We have 115 national board-certified teachers, 12 of them brand-new this year, and five that actually re-certified. This is significant, because you have to go all the way up to Northern Virginia before you find another school division that has the number of national board-certified teachers that we do. I'm not going to read through all the things that you see on this slide. It's important, though, to note that we have a number of choices for our families, to include things at the high school, like our International Baccalaureate Program, our Armstrong School for the Arts, and our Health Sciences Academy at Bethel High School. We have 20 advanced placement courses and have had tremendous success in improving the performance of our students taking AP tests. Our results: 82% of Hampton's parents gave their child school an A or a B. And this is significant, because on the Phi Delta Kappa annual survey done by the Gallup poll, theirs is only at 74%. We add a 6% in our graduation rate in just one year, and our students are accepted into the best universities in the nation. The other thing that I think is important to note, that back in August of 2012, the city conducted a survey. And one of the questions on the survey was for the individuals to note one thing which the city should focus. And the highest percentage on that survey was given to a focus on schools. So are we an excellent investment? Yes, we are. As we look at school divisions that were identified as our cohort school divisions in the MGT study, the efficiency study that was conducted in 2009, you'll see that Hampton City Schools consistently ranks first or second. These cohort groups of schools, school divisions, are school divisions that are like Hampton City Schools in terms of being more urban, older, and similar demographics. So you'll see Roanoke, Hampton, Lynchburg, Portsmouth, Newport News, and Norfolk. And consistently, as you look at each one of these categories, Hampton City Schools is either first or second. Now, I don't want anyone to think that we only benchmark ourselves against divisions that are more like us. Because as we do our work, we are really benchmarking ourselves against those with whom we wish to compete, like Williamsburg, York County, and Pecosin. And I'm standing here in front of you tonight to tell you, we're going to catch up with them. So here's our performance in academics and graduation rate, but here's another performance indicator that I think is critically important to everyone. We are the lowest in per pupil expenditures out of our cohort group. So you'll look at Roanoke City at $11,000 per child, Lynchburg at over $10,000, Newport News $10,500, Norfolk $10,500, Portsmouth $10,450, and Hampton at $9,952. Now, if you're someone who perhaps doesn't have children in school anymore or has never had children in schools, why are schools important to you? Well, I submit to you that schools are a vital driver of economic development in a city. Hampton City Schools is also one of the largest employers in Hampton. Housing values are tightly tied to the quality of schools in a city. And the schools themselves provide so much more than education. It's opportunities for our young people to have social opportunities, to participate in clubs and activities, and to become engaged, because engaged students become engaged citizens. And high school graduates are more likely to be employed and be productive members of society. Students who are engaged in school are less likely to become teen parents; their children are more likely to become high school graduates; they're less likely to commit crime; they're less likely to use public services, such as food stamps or housing assistance; they're more likely to vote and to become volunteers in the community. And really important is that they make more than $9700 a year than someone who doesn't finish high school. And that's an important economic indicator for our community. These are the school goals, the division goals, that are in place in our strategic plan for 2010 through 2015. And there are specific initiatives aligned to each one of these goals. And these initiatives are supported by our people and by our operational budget. But I have to tell you, we do face challenges. Hiring and retaining quality educators in a competitive market; salaries and benefits are important; maintaining adequate support systems; meeting the academic and social needs of all students; increasing student achievement; keeping up to date with technology hardware, software, applications, and support; maintaining facilities as our buildings age; and also critically important is making sure that all of our buildings are safe and secure for our staff and students; and finally, keeping our transportation fleet up to date. I mentioned earlier that again we face a challenge. And that challenge is a shortfall of $9.2 million. Now, I want to help everyone understand that budgeting is a dynamic process up until the moment that we put the final approval and we have all of our final figures in. So we still have just a couple of outstanding expenditures that we're waiting to receive. But as of this moment, our deficit is $9.2 million. So very quickly, I just want to explain how we define this budget gap. So we begin with the original FY '13 budget of a little over $191 million. We add back the two months of health insurance. As you'll recall, last year we gave a two-month premium holiday. So that means we've got to add in two months to make the full 10 months for our next budget. The 2% salary increase, and at the time that we presented this to you in January, this included the VRS offset. So it was 1% salary, 1% VRS offset, for about $2.6 million. And your Horizon increase of a little over $97,000, and then subtracting from that attrition, $1.8 million. And that's when we roll employees over and capture the salaries that we'll have for the following year. Transportation to Jones, Cooper, and the Bridgeport lease. As you recall, last year, that was one-time money given to us from city council. And then the 1% VRS shift to employees of $886,000. So our FY '14 base budget is at $193,515,822. So to define the budget gap, we take our total projected revenue, and that's $188,582,932. And of that, we have a reduction in city revenue of about $1.7 million. That's due to the assessed values of our property. And I have to tell you, at one point, that was much greater. Our original figures came in at about 6%, so it would have been over $4 million. Those figures have been adjusted. And so what we have now is about a 1.7 deficit in local funding. The total base expenditures of $193,515,822 that we saw from the previous slide, that defines our budget gap of $4.9 million. Now, what we have to do then is to add the additional expenditure pressures. So when we gave you the budget in January, we thought that we could take the 2% raise that was recommended by the governor, use 1% for the VRS offset, and 1% for the raise. We found out later we couldn't do that. So you'll see that the additional 1% raise over what we had originally proposed is back in there. The health insurance increase. And if you recall, originally, we had thought that put an estimate in of about $2 million. It really came back to almost $2.3 million. We have an E-rate proposal out, and it's going to require new switches and handsets, about $250,000. VPSA, that is bond money that we get each year to support our technology infrastructure. Because we're getting additional money, we need to have additional local match funds. And that's what you'll see right here, $227,500. As we continued our budget building, we received some additional costs from New Horizons and for special education placements, a little over $131,000. Our self-insurance went up, $76,960. OSHA chemical disposal of $20,000. And as you recall, several years ago, we purchased AEDs for all of our school buildings and our administrative building. It's now time to get new batteries and pads for $16,842. So our total budget gap is $9.2 million. I think it's always good to look at our revenue over time. And you'll notice, back in FY '09, we had over $215 million. And then you'll notice the very, very steep decline. The bump that we had right here, if you'll remember, that was because of the increase in the Virginia Retirement System contribution. It was a 6.04% increase. And so it increased our revenues, because the state provides us funds to support SOQ positions. But on the other hand, it was an extreme pressure on our expenditures, because it was a $6.74 million expenditure pressure, because that applies to all of our employees. Now, I have to let you know at this time, it's kind of a heads-up, as we look ahead to the next biennium, we're going to see additional VRS pressure; we're going to see pressure from our Hampton Employees Retirement System; and our local composite index will be recalculated. So the pressures that we're seeing from the retirement system will not go away. So when we're looking at closing this budget gap, it's going to require reductions to strategic focus areas. Under maximize every child's learning, these are the proposed cuts to close our budget shortfall. First of all, a reduction in our elementary art, music resource teachers to standards of quality levels. And standards of quality require five positions per 1,000 in grades K through 5 for art, music, and PE. What we're proposing is to take the art and music teachers to SOQ levels, which will mean the reduction of 10 positions for savings over a little over $600,000. Additionally, looking at the reduction of elementary school counselors to SOQ levels. SOQ levels for counselors, it's one hour per day per 100 students, and a full-time counselor at 500 students. Currently, only four schools would get a full-time counselor: Langley, Machen, Aberdeen, and Forest. This proposal is the elimination of eight positions for a total of $467,000. The next proposal is to share elementary assistant principals at selected schools. Now, SOQs do not call for assistant principals at almost any, well, at none of our elementary schools. SOQ standards call for a part-time assistant principal in elementary schools at 600 students and a full-time at 900. What we did, we looked at our highest-performing elementary schools who had high performance over time, and also looked at combining these schools so that they would share assistant principals. These schools are Asbury, Phillips, Langley, Booker, Barron, Cooper, Armstrong, and Tucker-Caps. This would mean the elimination of four positions for savings of $298,000. Currently, we fund field trips at $2 per student at elementary and $3 per student at secondary. Our next proposal is to reduce the field trip funding by 50% for savings of $25,681. The next proposal, again, goes back to standards of quality. Standards of quality look at student enrollment at grade levels. And at 4, 5, and 6, according to the standards, we can have a ratio of 25 to 1, with no class being greater than 35 students. And so we're looking at increasing class size at grades 4 and 5 to no more than 30. This would involve three teacher positions for savings of $179,459. Our next proposal is to eliminate middle school model of teams. This would eliminate 10 teaching positions for savings of $586,920. Now, the teaming concept in middle school really helps to ease the transition from the very small elementary schools to the much larger middle schools. This proposal would eliminate that. It would be more like the junior high school model of staffing that we formerly had. And would essentially, you know, there are certain points in a child's transition from 6th grade to middle school and from 8th grade into high school that we'd like to provide smaller learning communities. And this would, in essence, take away that smaller learning community for young people. The next proposal is to eliminate the eight-period AB block schedule in high school to a seven-period daily schedule. Currently, we offer an eight-AB schedule, which means on one day, students go to four classes, 90 minutes each; the next day, they go to another set of four classes for 90 minutes each. Having eight classes does allow for greater opportunities for acceleration and remediation. It allows for more elective choices for our young people. I really do believe that it has assisted us in improving our graduation rates. And the eight-AB model, teachers typically have about 75 students a day. If we do go to a seven-period day, teachers will typically have up to 150 students a day. However, with a seven-period day, class time, the amount of learning time will increase by about 10 hours. So they'll get 10 hours of additional instruction. They will be able to see teachers every day. And so for some classes, this is favorable, particularly in foreign language classes and mathematics classes. Also, if a child is absent, it is somewhat easier to catch up if they miss a day. Now, as you look at all these things, I need for everyone to understand that we wouldn't be here having this discussion if it were not for the budget shortfall. All of these things are cuts that are very difficult to make and very difficult choices. And I believe that as we look at everything in total that I'm putting forward to you, that there will be impact on teaching, and there will be impact on learning. Under attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, one proposal is to reduce all supplements by 25% for savings of $520,000. Supplements are given to coaches, so your swim team, your soccer team, football, basketball, track; also your cheerleading sponsors, your athletic directors. Sponsors are also given for extra duties that teachers take on to help young people in Model UN, the newspaper, the yearbook staff, the band directors, National Honor Society, Odyssey of the Mind, drama. And then also for certifications, like our national board certification, the journeyman's card that some of our classified people get. And also as our employees work through the various apprenticeship levels in our maintenance department. So our proposal is that all of these are cut by 25%. The next proposal is to eliminate the elementary instructional leader supplement for savings of a little over $146,000. This supplement was previously eliminated from high school teachers a couple of years ago. The elementary instructional leader really serves as a liaison with central office, the curriculum leaders, and teacher specialists. And it's particularly helpful when we have changes in curriculum pacing guide, we want to get teaching strategies out quickly, changes about SOL testing. These individuals kind of do a train-the-trainer model for us and assist us in getting information out very quickly to our teaching staff. Our next proposal is to reduce the kindergarten instructional assistants to part-time. This will reduce support for students in kindergarten, particularly when teachers are trying to do small-group instruction. I don't know how many of you have recently been in a kindergarten, but it's a very lively place. And the need to have someone assisting the teacher, particularly during transition times, is, to me, very important. I think the biggest part about this one, though, is that these individuals are currently full-time, and so they receive the full benefit package. This proposal would eliminate the benefit package to our kindergarten instructional assistants. The next proposal is to restrict sick leave payout. Currently, when someone leaves Hampton City Schools, we give them the option of getting a payout on their unused sick leave of $30 a day. This proposal would take that option away, so that if someone leaves Hampton City Schools, not retiring, but leaves Hampton City Schools, they would no longer be paid for their unused sick leave. The leave would remain on our books for five years in the event that the person does come back. Now, this doesn't mean if somebody wants to transfer the leave to another school division, that they won't be able to do that. They will indeed still be able to do that. They can transfer up to 90 days. And that's for savings of $60,000. Our next proposal is to close Moton Early Childhood Center. The important thing to remember about this one is that it's only to close the building. The number of students served in our preschool program will continue to remain the same. The teachers there will be transferred, along with the young people, to schools scattered throughout our community. So the savings here result from the principal salary, the custodians, the clerical, and a part-time nurse. And our last proposal, under attract, develop, and retain, would be to reduce the 12-month contract from 249 days to 245. Now, this, in effect, is a 1.6% salary reduction. Now, 12-month people include such people as our electricians, mechanics, principals, some assistant principals, secretaries, administrators, curriculum leaders, our network support people, and plumbers. So it's a wide range of job titles. Maintain effective, efficient, and innovative support systems. Our first proposal is to eliminate cafeteria monitors. Currently, it's about 58 individuals for savings of $250,000. As you recall, we did have this up for potential cut previously, and we restored it with Education Jobs Funds. Currently, elementary and middle schools have cafeteria monitors. They will need to develop some kind of alternate plan to make sure that young people are supervised during lunchtime. Our next proposal is to replace 50% of our RNs with LPNs. Again, the standards of quality do call for a healthcare professional, but it doesn't call for a registered nurse. We could replace our registered nurses with licensed professional nurses. A concern with this is that we do have more medically fragile children in our school division and a number of young people with allergies. The savings here would be $238,028. The next two items are items that we have put on for discussion. The outsourcing of custodians really is an option that we are developing right now. There are several different options that we can look at, from all the way from bringing in a company to serve as a management function for our current custodial staff, which would actually cost us more money, all the way through having the whole function of custodial services outsourced, which could be a potential savings of a little over $1 million. The increase of the walk zone up to 1.5 miles is a savings of approximately $500,000. Currently, the non-transport zone for elementary school is half a mile, and for the secondary schools, it's one mile. I do have some concerns about safety and security with this particular proposal. Managing fiscal resources effectively and efficiently. We are projecting a decrease of approximately 550 students. And we always have a discussion about, well, what does that mean in terms of teaching staff and support staff and reduction- staff and support staff and reductions that we can make? Individuals seem to think that you just take that five-hundred-and-fifty and divide it by twenty students, and that's how many teachers you can eliminate. It doesn't really quite work like that, because as you look at the five-hundred-and-fifty students, they are scattered throughout our thirty-some buildings and within our buildings over different grade levels. But we are going to be able to adjust our budget by one-point-seven million dollars based on decreased student enrollment. So the grand total of all of the strategic areas and what you'll see in terms of proposed reductions is ten-point-four million dollars. So that does give us a little bit of flexibility to go in and look at how we can adjust some of these proposed reductions. You've seen this next graphic for a number of years, but I just wanted to make sure that, once again, we look at it and to remind you again that over the past four years, twenty-four million dollars. And twenty-four million dollars equated to the reduction in our employees of three-hundred-and-seventy-six F T Es. That means full-time equivalent positions. And the way that we have done that is to work with these bans and work toward the center, protecting the center as much as we possibly could. So as we look at making decisions about budgeting cuts and adjustments, we always look toward protecting the classroom teacher. And over the past few years, the reductions that you've seen in classroom teachers have been because of reductions in enrollment. But we have worked through the contracted ban, the part-time and temporary clerical, operational administration, and the majority of our cuts have come from the support staff. Twenty-seven-point-nine percent of our support staff is no longer with us. Fully one in four are no longer with us. We have cut twelve percent of our workforce. And with the proposals that I've shown you tonight, that total goes to eighteen percent. And here's how it works out. As you see, this shows you the position circle, all of the classifications, and the number of positions is our base in F Y O nine. And then, over the years, the number of cuts. And then, finally, the percentage of cuts using F Y O nine as the base. And so, as you look down through here, you'll see that we have indeed been successful in protecting classroom teachers. As you look at principals and school admin, the reductions that you see there are primarily due to the six schools that we closed. So I would submit to you that Hampton City Schools, as you look at our per-pupil expenditures being the lowest of our cohort group, as you look at the position reductions that we've made, that we've been very fiscally responsible. We have looked at our internal operating budget, we have looked at our staffing, we have looked at our facilities, and we've done everything that we can to make sure that we are as efficient as possible. Earlier, I talked to you about the increase in our health insurance. Our employee health insurance and premiums will increase by an average of twenty-two-point-six percent. The calendar-year deductibles will increase to five hundred dollars for an individual and a thousand dollars for a family for both our P P O and our H M O. And this is from our current zero deductible. There's no change in prescription drug copays or deductibles. The H M O office visit copay will increase to twenty-five dollars or fifty. Currently, it's a twenty-forty. The diagnostic lab charges will have a twenty-percent copay. The P P O will have no change in copays for the specialist office visits and diagnostic or lab. The Hampton City School's share of the total premium is eighty-three percent. These are the proposed insurance rates for the upcoming school year. And for a point of comparison, you will see the plan type, employee-only all through, all the way through employee plus family. You'll see the P P O costs for this current year and what the P P O cost will be for next year. So as an example, for the employee-only, it will go from ninety dollars and seventy-one cents to a hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. That's a twenty-two-dollar and ninety-one-cent increase. That is sixteen-percent increase of the total premium paid by the employee. As you look at the H M O, it will go from forty-nine eighty-five to sixty-five forty. That is a fifteen-dollar and fifty-five-cent increase. The rates here are shown monthly, and deductions are taken out for ten months. Our total cost for insurance for Hampton City Schools is twenty-one-point-nine million dollars. Of that, eighteen million is paid by Hampton City Schools as the employer, and three-point-seven is paid by the employee. The budget that I'm putting forward to you contains absolutely no funds for our replacement schedules. So for our technology replacement schedule and for our school bus replacement schedule, for the past several years, we've not been able to totally allocate the resources that we need. And so what you see here is what we need to really catch up. But we are not in a position right now to allocate any funds to these replacement schedules. You know, I often get questions about certain things that we can and cannot cut. And so it's important to realize, when I was talking earlier about the V R S offset, we can't, we have to do that. So over the next few years, all of our employees have to start paying their five percent of the Employee Virginia Retirement cost. We have already phased in one percent of that. You saw earlier that we have included the next one percent. I would be delighted to be able to go on and get all of that done so that we would have it completely out of the way. Every year that we delay it actually makes the cost increase for us, because each one percent is going to be building on a larger base. Eighty percent of our budget is tied to the mandated standards of quality. Standard two talks to the instructional administrative and support personnel. And eighty percent of our budget is allocated to those positions that are mandated by the standards of quality. So we have very little flexibility in some of the positions that we can eliminate. Programs that have state funding, when there's a revenue coming in to support the program, it really doesn't make sense to cut it. We've had a number of people say, "Well, why don't you eliminate summer school?" Well, it really doesn't make any sense, because we get the revenue to support it in elementary and middle school and in high school itself, supporting. The same thing is for the class size mandates for pre-K through three. We get the funding to support it. Additionally, we have requirements for special ed, gifted services, E S L, and other programs that we are mandated to do. So the question becomes, how do we invest in our future and in their future? And the choice is really ours. We are really fortunate to live in a community where we have individuals who do support our public education, but we truly are at a crossroads where we need to decide what we're going to do as a community. The city manager and I, Mary Bunting, and I have been going to various community forums to talk to individuals about what we're experiencing about the city budget and the school budget. And so tonight, I'm just going to very quickly talk to you about some options for all of us. And those options are, as a community, are we going to invest in our community, in our city, and in our school system? Are we going to protect what we have? Or are we going to make the decision to disinvest? Hampton has one of the lowest tax rates. As you'll see here, Portsmouth at a high of one-twenty-seven, Norfolk at one-eleven, Newport News at one-ten, Chesapeake at a dollar-five, and Hampton at a dollar-four. Virginia Beach is lower at ninety-five cents. But the other thing that you have to keep in mind is the value of the housing. So it's not just the tax rate, it's also what your tax bill is, the amount that you're actually paying. As you look at Hampton's property rates, if you'll recall, we were at the high of one-twenty-seven, that was back in two thousand and three. And as the property values continued to go up, they were adjusting the tax rates down. And so as we got to two thousand and eight, we were at a dollar-six, and then at two thousand and nine, it was adjusted to a dollar-four, and has remained at that level through this past year. And so what has happened is that as the housing values continued to go up, the city council very wisely said, "Let's lower the tax rate." However, the reverse hasn't been true. As the property values have been dropping, the tax rate has not been equalized. And so the question becomes, do we keep cutting or do we start rebuilding? The cities and schools have worked with less from taxpayers now for the last four years. The city and schools have each cut, for example, the city has cut ten percent of its workforce, the school division twelve percent. And as you heard just a moment ago, if all of the proposed cuts go forward, we will have reduced eighteen percent of our workforce. Again, I want to remind you, in city polling, residents have said that they don't want more cuts in services. And remember, they said they wanted a focus on improving schools. So one possible path is to invest. And what does investing mean? Need to explain to you, first of all, that one cent equals approximately one million dollars in revenue. So this chart shows how we could invest for the future. Need to also remember that the schools and the city share in a funding formula. So the schools receive sixty-one-point-eight-three percent of all taxes that come from residential real estate, personal property, and residential utility taxes. So you'll see, in order to make up for the 2014 real estate decline requires three cents. The mandatory increases for schools at four cents. Mandatory increased costs for city at four cents. The two-percent raise for school employees, three cents. Now, I want to stop for just a moment, because many of you will recall that in the governor's budget, he came out supporting a two-percent raise for teachers, the S O Q-funded teachers. That was later amended by the General Assembly to also include the S O Q-supported support positions. So for the school division to give the two-percent raise, which is approximately two-point-six million dollars, we will be getting funds from the state of approximately one-point-five million. So the net cost to us is one-point-one million. Fund average two-percent merit raises for city employees, the first one since two thousand and eight, two cents. Invest in city growth and capital projects, four cents. Invest in school growth, four cents. So to invest in the city and in the school division, we are proposing a twenty-four cent. Now, it really can be anywhere from the protect level of about sixteen cents to twenty-four cents. The last two, the four cents for the city growth and capital projects and the invest-in-school growth, are, would be given to projects that are one-time projects. So what does investing cost? As we look at the values of homes and apply a twenty-four-cent tax increase, the annual increase for a hundred-thousand-dollar home is a hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents, but the monthly increase in that is about fifteen-seventy-three. So you'll see in fifty-thousand-dollar increments from a hundred-thousand dollars to three-hundred-thousand dollars what that would mean for an individual homeowner. So if you look at typical homes in the neighborhoods in Hampton, and you look at what people paid on their tax bill in two thousand and eight and compare it with what they paid this year, their tax bill, for example, in Riverdale, is approximately four-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars less. Now, that's looking at an average home in the Riverdale area. And so you can see samples of various neighborhoods throughout Hampton. Another possible path for us to look at is to protect what we currently have. And in protecting what we currently have, the same chart, but you'll see the elimination of the last two items that were for investing in one-time projects. So the total tax increase would be at sixteen cents. So what does sixteen cents mean for a typical homeowner? For a hundred-thousand-dollar home, the annual increase is a hundred and twelve dollars or nine dollars and thirty-three cents a month. And then, looking again at the neighborhood, at the Riverdale home, even at going with a sixteen-cent increase, it would increase the tax bill by a hundred and twelve dollars, but it would still be less than what the resident was paying in two thousand and eight. The final path that can be decided upon is the path of disinvesting. And what this really means is that we want to keep our dollar-four tax rate. And what it means is that all the cuts that were previously mentioned would go into effect. Now, you've seen the schools' potential cuts. I've tried to outline for you some of the things that, the challenges that we'll face with those potential cuts, what they may mean to our children and to our staff. But here's the other piece of this. The city is also proposing a lot of cuts. And these cuts are going to impact our schools, and they're going to impact the quality of life in Hampton. The city's facing a shortfall of seven-point-six million. And what I've done, I'm not going to go through all of these with you, but the ones that you see highlighted in red are ones that have a direct impact on Hampton City Schools. So the history museum, the Bluebird Gap Farm, closing all the branch libraries, closing the teen center, eliminating parent education classes, eliminating Healthy Start, eliminating youth engagement and youth partnership programs, eliminating our school crossing guards, reduce mowing of parks and school grounds and medians from once every fourteen days to once per month. I don't know about you, but I can't imagine mowing my own home once a month and what the school grounds will look at if we have to go to a once-a-month mowing. Decrease the C S B contribution for mental health. And the reason why that one is highlighted, because C S B is a very important partner to us in Hampton City Schools. They help support us in our Y-Pet program and also in our HERE attendance program. The eliminating the contribution to alternatives, eliminating the contribution to the food bank, eliminating the contribution to Star Achievers Academy, that's our Cooper Elementary School, eliminating the contribution to the Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities, eliminating the contribution to the Downtown Hampton Child Development Center, one of our partners in making sure that our young people come to school ready to learn. The next steps that we'll be seeing, public comment opportunities on the proposed tax increase. We've already had two opportunities for people to weigh in. At Kickitown High School on February twenty-sixth, we had about a hundred and twenty people there. And then at Bethel High School last Saturday, we had approximately a hundred and sixty. And during these opportunities, people are able to roll on all of these various proposed cuts, and they can indicate whether they are okay with the cut, they are absolutely not okay with the cut and don't support it, or they're really unsure. And thus far, we have polled over three hundred people, and ninety percent of the people have been, have polled to indicate that they would invest or protect. So what that means is that they would be willing to do anywhere from sixteen cent to twenty-four cent to help protect or invest in cent to help protect or invest in our schools and city. There are some additional opportunities for people to provide input on Thursday, March 7, at Hampton High School, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. And then on Saturday, at the Rupert Sargent Building, Saturday, March 9, in the first-floor Veterans Conference Room, 9 a.m. to 11 a.m. Mrs. Bunting and I are also available to speak to any neighborhood groups or civic groups. Last evening, we spoke to the North Hampton Civic League, and I'm happy to report that they were also in favor of investing or protecting the current level of the proposed tax increases. In terms of the Hampton City Schools' budget process, we'll have budget hearings on March 13th and 20th. The final approval of the budget is due by March 27. The board will then submit its budget to city council by April 1, but it's not over yet. After that, the city council, Mrs. Bunting will present her city manager's proposed budget to city council by April 15 with a public presentation on April 17. They'll have their public input, 6 p.m. in the council chambers on May 24 and May 8. City council will approve its budget by May 15. And so I leave you with this. The choice is ours. We can invest, protect, or disinvest. And I'll take any questions that you may have at this point, and I thank you for your attention. I also wanted, before I do that, I want to thank the members of our community and members of our Hampton City Schools' family who have provided suggestions to us, who have questioned us, and would also direct people to go to our website. And on the right-hand side, we have a whole budget section set up so that you can see information about our proposed budget, and there's a whole set of questions and answers that we have had submitted to us.